There's a link that is key to all the information someone would need to look at the information for the meeting and then to attend the meeting. And that is HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash. WWW dot Norwalk CT all run together dot org. Dot gov also work GOV. Forward slash nineteen thirteen. Forward slash meeting dash notices with just those two words capitalized. So that link will make it possible for anybody to find out what we're doing, see the agenda, see what materials we've got. And then to it'll get they'll give them information to attend the Zoom meeting. I just need a couple, a couple of more things. I want to say that the members can call in, the members of the public can call in and listen to a meeting. They won't be able to speak or see any of the meeting participants, but each meeting will use a unique meeting webinar ID. Please find the information at the link. Members of the public who wish to provide live comments will need to register in advance and use the Zoom meeting platform for the meeting. All participants will be muted upon entering the meeting. To speak, click the raise your hand indicator. You'll be called on by the host of the meeting during the public comment. Please find the information using the link. I specify. Members of the public who wish to provide public comment are encouraged to submit those things via email. For those comments to be read into the record, they should be submitted at least four hours in advance. And you would send them to T Maldonado at Norwalk CT dot board and Maldonado is spelled M A L. D O N A D O. With that, I'm gonna call us to order and I'm gonna mention that all five board members. And. Are all present and that would be Andy Conroy, Lee Levy, Keith Lyon, Marilyn Altman, Daniel Sancheck, Tom Park, Steve Ferguson and Ben Handtiger. For the first item, I designate these five people to sit at the board for this evening. That item is twenty three oh seven twenty dash oh one Cedar Crest. These are the folks sitting Danielle Sancheck, Marilyn Altman, Tom Farkas, Steve Ferguson and Ben Handtiger. Well, with that, if whoever's representing. The folks at Cedar Crest would join us, let's move the meeting forward.
Good evening. My name is Mihal Butler and.
Andy?
Sorry, yeah, we need the.
You're out of line in that you didn't ask me to read the item.
Oh, well, read the item.
Well, you didn't recognize me, so I didn't. Okay. Item two, three dash zero, seven, two, zero, dash, zero, one. Clever Garcia variance affront setback required thirty feet existing ten twenty point five feet dwelling. Fourteen feet porch proposed eighteen point two feet dwelling fourteen point one feet porch. Section one, one, eight dash three, five, zero, C. For a proposed two-story addition and front porch at existing single-family residence in C resident zone. Property located at two Cedar Crest Place District five block sixty four lot one oh four. Request, the applicant seeks variance to allow proposed addition and new front porch to be located. Partially within the front setback background. The existing residence was built in nineteen thirty eight based on referencing historical area. Aerial imagery and mapping, the dwelling's front portion and front porch. Seems to have been constructed sometime after nineteen seventy eight. Encroaching into the front setback and creating a now existing legal non-conformity. Analysis and findings, the dwelling's existing non-conformity alone does not appear. As an identifiable zoning hardship. However, the proposed addition does not affect the overall encroachment dramatically. The proposed foundation for the living space adds approximately forty-four square feet of additional encroachment. Into the front setback and the replacement porch would add about sixteen square feet of additional footprint encroachment. To the front setback.
All set?
Yes, that's it.
Yeah, um, so let's proceed with the person representing Cedar Street application or Cedar Crest. Application.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mihal Butler and I'm here today. To represent Cedar A, I mean clever A Garcia on behalf of his variance application. For to see their crest place Norwalk Connecticut. Mister Garcia would like to apply for a front setback reduction variance. Reducing the front setback from the required thirty feet. To fourteen feet which would result in sixteen feet front setback reduction request. The pre-existing non-conforming front port setback line we thought would be a hardship, but I just hear that that doesn't qualify as. Uh, we plan to convert a portion of the existing porch into a living space and expand only. Into the left of the house without imposing into the side yard setbacks. The refurbished part of the home would not impose into the front setback, I mean, I'm sorry, the existing. A part of the front porch would not imposed into front setback anymore than the existing. Um, the existing front porch and office structure is unstable and in need of rebuild. Ratted front floor structure members are beyond repair as well as leaking roof. The front porch was built without a foundation and would potentially be lifted by heavy wind conditions. The proposed alteration and addition would comply with with the latest state building codes and wind requirements. Thank you for your attention and consideration in this matter respectfully submitted Mihal Butler.
Okay, um. Our board members can ask questions at this point. Go right ahead. Let me see somebody that has a question and raise your hand and then.
Do we have any maps, surveys that show this?
The surveys were submitted with the application.
I don't have anything in front of me.
Mikhail, do you want me to share screen?
Please, please, if you could.
Okay, give me just one moment.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to walk through which part of the proposed structure is over the setbacks on the survey.
Yeah, one of the things the board members might need to understand is exactly why the variance is needed.
Well, uh, like I said prior, the front porch is without foundations, so there is no hold downs. Of any kind preventing it from, you know, potential uplift. And the client would like to add, I mean, would like to convert portion of the existing port. Into a living space. There is a line, uh, if you could zoom in, I'm not sure if I can.
No, I have to do it. Just tell me how far you want to go.
Yeah, could you zoom into the front portion of the structure, please?
How's that look? Oh, hang on.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, so you know, so that line here, that would be the additional heated space. And that would be the proposed new porch. Right now, the porch is up to here. Um, so we converting slight portion of the porch. We would like to convert slight portion of the porch. Into a living space and basically we would not come closer with that addition or refurbished to the street that it is right now.
So you see I'm circling the fourteen that's existing condition and fourteen point one is proposed.
Yeah, so you know, a little bit further down, you know, just to be safe.
And then eighteen one to the living area.
Yes, to the proposed and then the existing was twenty point five of the the living space. So we would like to push forward about two, two feet, yeah, two, two feet.
If I'm understanding what you're saying and I'm just clarifying, I'm not sitting.
Yes.
The fourteen oh becomes fourteen one. Uh, so you're not approaching any further with the porch itself.
Correct.
Timmy, are there any exterior elevations?
Yes.
Yes, we have a plan. If you could, there, there are existing and proposed.
You might have to reduce them a little.
Yes.
It looks smaller now?
A little bit more.
Good.
Well, that's the left elevation and I mean, I, I believe we have also existing, right? Conditions.
Yeah, this is existing.
Oh, this is existing. Okay, yes, so this is existing. So basically the porch, I can't really see there. Uh, if you could zoom in a little bit more or existing left elevation, it's six feet, I believe, right?
Hang on, sorry.
Yeah, it's six feet, so we would downsize this to four feet. Uh, and expand the existing office. I mean, we would need to rebuild it because that addition was done, I assume, without any permit. And it's just. Um, and it's not sound.
What is it extending out from now? Part of the porch or part of the house property?
Well, well, we would like to keep the porch at the same, you know, uh, uh, distance from the street. As it is right now, and we would like to move forward with the existing, uh, we can move it inside. Can we can we show the proposed left elevation? Yeah, so there's a second, yeah, so we would above the porch, we above the new porch within. Uh, you know, apply any living space and we just, you know, the second story addition is flash with the first floor addition, which would be. Approximately two feet plus closer to the street that it is right now.
Is there a particular reason you have to do that?
Well, I mean, I don't believe there is. I mean, this, that's, you know, just the client expansion, you know, of the house a little bit while, you know. While, while working on the, uh, you know, securing of the existing structure, meaning, you know, needs to be rebuilt, so. Just wanted to put the second story addition above. Since it's already, you know, in.
Have you done any work on the house up to this point?
Excuse me?
Have you done any work on the house up to this point?
No. I just, I just, I just inspected and I present that I created this drawing.
Okay.
I noticed that the second floor. Is cantilevered over the first floor essentially.
That's a, I'm sorry, that's a overhang, roof overhang.
No, it's not. It doesn't appear that way. It appears as a cantilever.
Can you, can you please zoom in a little bit on the proposed left?
Yes.
Uh, can you go up a little bit?
Yeah, hang on.
Yes, I would like to just depict the line. Uh, just now it's good and then if you could go a little bit to the right. Okay, so the, the, the wall line, that's the wall line and that's the, uh, you know, first floor. Front wall and that's the second floor first.
Wait, sorry, we need to be on this elevation, right?
Yeah, that's the boat. I mean, doesn't matter that the left or right, they took the same thing, so.
Okay, it's just your drawing, your drawing wasn't very clear.
I'm sorry, this is a, uh, just the, just the overhang here and that's the roof overhang and the roof overhang and this is the roof, just to create it.
I understand it now. It drawing was not very clear.
Apologies. Should have used some texture for the roof, I believe. We'll do next time.
There anything else on the plan I should show?
Does anybody else that's sitting for this have a question?
Yeah, I got one. Um, is there any reason that the current setback of the building, the, the twenty? Twenty point whatever that, that that can't be maintained? Is there a reason that it's moving to eighteen?
Well, I mean. The only reason is that front. Office space is somewhat narrow and hard to utilize. It's more like a oversized closet than. In a space that they would like to use. Um, that's, that's about it. Expansion of their living. Waters.
Yeah, I was able to look at the plans. I, I know that the, the office is being taken out and that the, the width of the living room is being expanded on the front and, and moved up that two feet. Um, I'm just wondering if there's anything that's preventing you from, from doing that same kind of thing, but rather than the. Eighteen foot setback proposed that the twenty foot setback be maintained.
It's just, could we, could we, could we show the floor plans, please? If that's possible, just the first floor, if we could zoom into the.
Yeah, hang on.
Thank you. Um, that's, uh, that's proposed second floor, proposed first floor. Uh, can we go a little bit to the left? Yes.
Now blow it up, hang on.
I believe my, uh, drawings had, um, uh, gray color depicting the addition and stuff, but we have only the line, yes. Um, I'll be honest with you, there's just the, you know, will of expansion of that living room, so. Um, you know, there's, there's no, um, particular one. Just, just, just to, you know, just, just, just the. Um, you know, will of having a bigger space over there. That's about it. Um, we felt we just, we just going into the existing porch that would not really be. Uh, affecting the setback per se, but, uh, I guess it is. So that's, that's, there's, there's no like and any, any reason besides just, just, you know. Will of having that.
Yeah, I see what you're saying there. I think that if, uh, if the frontage of the width of the house was being held constant. That would be a pretty convincing argument to me that you're basically just playing around with the existing. You know, frontage of the building that you have, but it is a little bit different when you're also increasing the width of the building and moving this back.
Um. Yes.
So, but yeah, my, my, my question was really just that there's nothing, there's no.
There's not.
Hardship driving that, that decision of the eighteen foot. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone that's sitting want to ask a question? Right, um, would the presenter? Like to add any information? I, I just want to make sure that you knew that you needed a hardship of some sort. To ask for the variance.
Uh, yes, um, um, I, I felt, which I just learned that, that, that was not the case. That the existing non-conforming would be somewhat the hardship, you know, for that. Uh, additional two feet since, you know, we would stay within, you know. Somewhat structure between the porch and the living and the heated space. Uh, but, you know. I guess that's not the case.
Yeah, no, you do explain that you're not taking the porch any further out toward the street.
No, we're just keeping the same. We're not getting closer with it now.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, um, as was evident, the chairman still runs the meeting, even if he's not sitting on the decision making with this decision making group of five. Um, but I want to make sure the group of five are satisfied with the information they've received. If not, let me know.
Hey, all good for me.
Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment either for or against either way?
We don't have any attendees, so it's all just panelists.
Okay, and we didn't get any letters and cards from folks.
Nope.
With that, uh, then we'll move on to the next time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we vote at the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up. It is. Twenty three oh seven, twenty oh two. And that's one Cudlip Street and sitting on that. Is myself, Lee Levy, Keith Lyon, Marilyn Altman and Tom Farkas. And if we have a lot more of this here tonight, we would rotate everybody around a little more, but there's only two, so. I'm limited in what I could accomplish. So with this, we want Lee to read in the item.
Okay. Item two, three dash zero, seven, two, zero, dash, zero, two. Robert Kunalahan, pardon me if I've mutilated that, Mara. Banani variance affront setback required forty existing twenty one point five proposed twenty nine point two feet. Section one, one, eight dash three, one, zero, C. For a proposed two-story addition at existing single-family residence in triple A zone. Property located one Cudlip Street, District six, block one F lot two. Request, the applicant seeks variance to allow proposed addition to be located partially within the front setback. The existing residence was built in nineteen oh nine, which was prior to the nineteen twenty nine. Adaption of zoning regulations and required setbacks. Analysis and findings. This property abuts coastal resources and Amelia Williams memo notes that. The proposed addition location, quote, helps construction to take place further from the coastal wetlands. But still increases impervious area, unquote. If the board decides to grant the variance, an application for coastal site plan review will also be required. While an existing non-conformity is not necessarily grounds to grant the variance. A case from hardship seems valid due to the proximity of the coastal resources title wetlands. Mister Chairman.
Uh.
Mister Chairman, I have me.
Having made clear who's sitting, if we could have representative come forward.
Uh, while.
Wait, I might have a question.
Mister Chairman, uh, I've just noticed that Wilder is representing the client and Wilder has represented, uh. Me in the past, so I'm wondering if I should be recused and allow one of the alternates.
So actually that came up a long time ago on the board. There's a question to our, our council and the answer is unless they're directly involved in this. Or if you have a family member directly involved, no, you don't have to recuse yourself.
Okay, I'm perfectly fine with that. Thanks.
Um, you might go ahead, sir.
Great, um, Tammy, could I share my screen?
Yeah, you have the ability to do that.
Okay, let me just see, we gotta get at the bottom. Uh, here's. Okay, I represent, uh, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, okay, I represent Mara Banani and her husband, Robert Kunalahan. And they purchased one Cudlip Street in two thousand fifteen. And, uh, the assessor's card shows that in two thousand sixteen, they did an addition. Um, I mean, two thousand sixteen, they did an in-ground pool, I, I am seventeen and in sixteen, they did a substantial renovation of the property. But the pandemic hit, oh, and then here's the assessor's card. And then of most importance to me is the actual year but built is nineteen oh nine. And the, uh, livable or leasable square footage, do you see my cursor? Is that showing up for you all? Um, down at the bottom, building subarea, um, living leasable is about thirty six hundred. Um, so the house itself is situated on what is two lots. And working with Tammy in the last several months, we have realigned the lot lines. We basically took some property which is shown here. This is map number one, four, three, two, oh, which we recorded in the Norwalk land records. And we worked, it took us a while to get the configuration right so that. We could eliminate what would have been a side yard setback request. By expanding the width of this house lot and reducing the area of this vacant lot, which is right next door. Um, and so in doing that, we were able to create a situation where we. Only are requesting a front yard variance and that variance is set back from the existing situation. Which we believe has existed since nineteen oh nine, when the house was originally constructed. So, um. Uh, in this, um, map, uh, there's also, this is the coastal jurisdiction line. Which is the line defining the limit of the DEEP's jurisdiction over waterfront property. It's an elevation of five point five and anytime you do anything within that, you have to get the, the DEEP approval. And they basically say no. And we also have tidal wetlands that follow closely along with the CJL. Um, we'll show that later, but there's also, um, a flood zone. We are in an AE elevation thirteen flood zone and that follows along if you're, can you see my cursor?
Yep.
Okay, it follows along, hits the house, the garage about here, comes out of the house around here and sort of affects the property that way. I'll show that later, but I thought I would show you some pictures. Um, this is Cudlet Street and that's the corner of the house that's closest to the property line, the front property line that's, um. Uh, twenty one, it's twenty one point five feet from the street right of way. Um, and this stone wall was installed right on the property line, so the front face. Adjacent to the street is where the property line is, I believe. Um, in any event, this is another picture from inside the driveway looking at the house. And the addition is going to be off on this side here. The next set of pictures show you.
Hold on, hold on, that was a little bit too quick. Where is it going to be?
It's going to be on the far side of the house. If I look, it, it's, I come in the driveway here and in fact, it's going to be coming in on this side. Okay, towards row eight and center. This is, um, my back here is towards the Darien Town Line. And I'm looking at the center of Row eight and in here, okay? So.
Opposite the driveway, obviously.
Uh, yeah, on the other side of the driveway, okay? So, um, here's the house with a more distant perspective that shows, I mean, it's a beautiful piece of property with. Title wetlands all down here and coming up here. There's the dock, um, they have a pool in the back which was constructed in two thousand seventeen, I believe. And the addition is going to go off of here and to be located, um, if you see there's the low point, here's the river. Here's the tidal wetlands. You come up a level here, so that's sort of a, a second level. There's a third level here. Uh, where that, there's this retaining wall and then there's this upper level, but then you go up to the street. You can see it over here a little closer, so it's, it, it topographically, I think we're at sixteen feet at the high point. And we go down to, you know, four point three at mean high water down here. And the addition is going to be constructed. And the addition is going to be constructed off of this area. Um, so coming, and you can see there's. This is not going to be easy construction because of the topography. We also have a flood zone that goes at elevation thirteen that affects everything, so we're going to have, um, a, an unoccupied. Uh, lower floor, ground floor level with a first floor that meets elevation fourteen, uh, or higher. Um, and this is a closer up picture of where the addition will go, okay? Um, so. This picture, um. I think I'm going to try and get out of, uh, this mode and, no, I'll keep this going. Um, here again, you have, this is the tidal wetlands flags, you can see these triangles on those. Um, and the, the coastal jurisdiction line is dashed here. And we are showing now the addition and this addition is driven because. Uh, both Mister, uh, Mara Banani and her husband, Robert Kunalahan. Work primarily from home. And during COVID, they found it really didn't function well. And they need two offices because they both are pretty busy professionals. And so, um, they also don't really have a family room, so. They talked to their designer who came up with a plan for an addition that is connected to the main house. But is in the same style. And we have, um, but the addition, as you can see, is further setback from Cudlet Street. Than the existing house. Which has existed for a little over hundred and ten years. Um, and what's driving this is frankly. The tidal wetlands that are right here and the coastal jurisdiction line where we really just don't want to go. And then we have to create some sort of construction access around this. And we have to do, uh, soil erosion controls and other protective devices. To keep the construction impacts from affecting the wetlands. So we had to start sort of with this corner and push the building forward. And we, we've had to. Take a substantial portion of the vacant lot here. Um, and add it to the house lot in order to avoid a side yard variance. And we've done that to minimize the number of requests that we're making here. So we've already spent a fair amount of effort to minimize the variance request that we're seeking. This is the design of the house, uh, here's the connector, which is a hallway with a, a bathroom. Um, leading to the house. And there's a family room here with an entryway. And then on the second floor. We have two offices and a powder room. Um, and there's a stairway coming up. And that's basically it. And the, there's the roof line. And here's looking at the house, now this is from the rear point of view. So this is the existing house line right here. And on the far side of this, we're at the riverside looking at the back. Uh, it's the rear elevation and you can see there's the connector, then we have a two-story addition that has. An unoccupied, um, you know, uh, dead space, crawl space below, and that's the accessway. So that's the rear elevation, then. We flip to the side elevation from. Looking at the Row Eight and side towards the house. And the addition itself is basically outlined here. And you can see this is setback further from the corner of the house, uh, the existing porch. And this is the entryway. Um, and we have to come up a number of steps from outside to get to first floor elevation. And this is the street view, the front view, this is the existing house with a garage, so it's only a two-car garage, it's. It's not a huge McMansion. But it's, you know, it's a lovely house, it's, uh, nicely constructed or reconstructed in the, in two thousand sixteen. And they want to match that. And you can see they don't have a lot of windows here because the view is out the back. And, um, this is where the addition would be, but realize you've got that stone wall in the front, you're never going to see this. They also have, if you look at the pictures, I'll go back, they have, um. They have a row of trees along, uh, the inside of the stone wall, so nobody's going to see this. Particularly over time. But it's still a lovely, well-designed addition, uh, same materials and quality that you had before. And, um, you know, to match the existing. And then this is the site and I'm going to, uh. Let me just escape this, I'm going to blow this up. If I can, because I think this is the most interesting and it helps us understand the hardship. Once this, uh, resolution, um, works, so. Here more clearly, this is the existing dwelling. This is the proposed addition, by the way, by expanding it, I've, I've expanded it sideways. So it's no longer in scale, front to back, it's like we stretched it unfortunately. But in, it, uh, what my point of in doing this to show you that. We have a series, a double row of silt fences. Along to protect and denote the construction area. And on the inside along here, we have a construction fence. And this corner of the addition is fourteen point one feet from the title, uh, the title wetlands line. And it's six and a half feet from the construction fence. To the corner of the addition. And that's barely enough to get a small, um, excavator around to do whatever we need to do, to do backfilling and things like that as we construct. We have proposed some, uh, material stockpiles, construction stockpiles and construction access and parking here, so we thought it through. And you can see in this one that this is, um, twenty-one point five to the existing. And the setback is supposed to be, um, twenty-nine point two to this corner. So we're going back almost eight feet. Um, from the existing to here and, um. This here is the flood zone line. The water side of that is the A E elevation thirteen zone. And only this little bit up here and actually in here is in the zone X, which is not subject to flood regulations. So we have flood regulations, we have tidal wetlands, we have the coastal jurisdiction line. And because they absorb, you know, basically more than half of the depth. Of the lot where we're building our addition. We are really constrained and we need a little relief. And we're not asking to come to the same. Um, setback as the existing porch, we pushed it back eight feet. So we feel this is a really reasonable compromise and balancing the needs of the family. And, uh, the, the right to expand with, um, recognizing the, uh. Environmental issues, the coastal area issues, we still have to go get, um, uh, approvals from planning and zoning, um, for, uh. Uh, coastal area and related approvals and, um. So that's, uh, that's sort of where we are on that and, um. Here's the site development plan is a little clearer. Um, now you can see it in shape, you know, it's in the, uh, it's in the, um, perspective and that's correct. Um, I can blow this up a little bit if that's helpful, um. So you can see, uh, the twenty-one point five and this is, um, twenty-nine point two, it's sort of blocked by these, uh, material stockpiles. But we meet.
Tell me when, tell me when you're ready for questions.
Um, I was just going to come up with hardship if you want, and then I'm more than happy to answer questions if that's okay. Um, the hardships justifying the requests include the original placement of the house twenty-one point five feet from the property line in nineteen oh nine. Upgrading of the regs, I miss, I, uh, mistyped here, it's, I misunderstood it, it's nineteen twenty-nine that the regs were adopted in Norwalk. Um, the presence of tidal wetlands on a substantial portions of the property. Which constrains development, I would add the coastal jurisdiction line, which, um, actually is closer in some areas. And the need to provide adequate separation between the addition and the tidal wetlands for construction. And the fact that we revised our lot lines in order to eliminate a side yard variance. Seeking the minimum adjustment necessary, which is a, a front yard variance that's less than what exists. So, and then we clearly have a topographical challenge as well. So, um, that's my presentation, happy to take any questions.
Um, how much of the nineteen oh nine is actually left? Father building is gorgeous and is big, um, hardly looks like the original structure.
I, I don't know and I haven't really researched that. I know there was a very substantial renovation that was done after they bought the property in two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, and how much living space do they have?
They got about.
Would say.
The assessor says forty-two hundred square feet. And this is adding, um. I, I, you know, I don't know off the top of my hand, uh, uh, exactly how much. I would say, um, uh, maybe two thousand feet.
Yeah, the, uh, addition would be another two thousand?
Yeah, I think that's two floors.
So that gets you somewhere over six thousand?
Yeah.
And the need of the owner is exactly what?
Uh, they work during COVID, they don't have office space, they'd like the office space. And in order to create it, they need. The second floor space primarily and it just, uh, the, uh, the presence of the wetlands which absorbs basically half of this lot. And maybe a little more and he, uh, means they are very constrained and. In order to make the addition fit, they needed some relief because we can't, we really are pinned to this area right here. We can't go back further than there and still legitimately construct. Within the wetlands, we're going to have a difficult time convincing P and Z that we can actually work this close, I think we can convince them. But, um, uh, pushing it further back is going to be problematic. Um, and so then trying to get that same square footage in, we just wound up with this design and that setback.
And you ended up with a piece of property immediately adjacent that you've eaten into, um. But you can still build on that, um.
Yeah, you, it, it's potentially a buildable lot. I have to tell you, there's a flood zone line here, you have the tidal wetlands lines here. Um, anyone who's going to build on this is going to come to you for a variance.
Yeah.
Um, Mister Gleason.
Might have something to say about that tonight, um. I'd like the other board members to have to ask questions.
Mister Gleason, I noticed on the first floor plan of the addition. That there is a terrace on the rear. Of this addition.
Uh, that's at ground level.
Is it a ground level? Or is it at the level of the off, the family room?
Um, let's look at the elevations. Um, it's not at the elevation of the family room.
It appears that way on the drawing, sir.
It does. Oh, you know, you're right.
Well, I would say that you could push this addition back the depth of the terrace you're adding. I, I see considerable terraces off the rear of the house currently. And I personally object to that terrace. Being there and you're telling us you can't build any further back.
I, you know, um. Wow.
Okay, my, my second question, while you ponder that. You've talked about the flood elevation thirteen. What elevation is the existing house and the proposed addition?
Um. Got to pull that up just sec. Fifteen. And I believe the house is fifteen, I, I, uh, I don't see a step here between them, so there.
Okay. My, my next question is you were talking about the. The foundation under this addition. Is it a basement? Is it a crawl space?
I, I, uh, you can't have a basement in a flood zone.
I know that.
So it is not a basement.
Okay, if it's in the flood plain, you have to have breakaway walls, I don't see any indication of that.
No, that's, you need breakaway walls in a, in a velocity flood zone.
Okay.
In an A E elevation zone, which is a non-velocity flood zone, you have. Waves maximum height of three feet. You do not need breakaway walls, you just need flood vents. And so we would have flood vents that are one square inch for every square foot of, um, uh. You know, crawl space that we have.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Uh, if I could. Who's speaking? Hi, I'm, uh, Nico Nakos, I'm the designer. Uh, if I can just comment to Mister Levy's point regarding the, the deck, the back deck.
It's a terrace, sir.
The terrace, yeah, that terrace is cantilevered, there's no foundation, um, on that terrace, so.
You're indicating it as stone.
Yes, it's, it's a, it's a cantilevered slab. So they were going to build a structural deck for it. And, and cantilever it so that it doesn't impact, uh, any of the wetlands or, uh, rear restrictions.
Could you go back to the elevations? I want to see where that cantilever is.
Sure, I'll go back to that. So if you, if you zoom in, that white band that's underneath the railing.
Please go to the side elevation.
Yeah.
Play in the white band.
That white band is a, is a structural deck. Uh, with a framework of steel, what you're seeing below that is the rear elevation further back on the main house.
Okay, it strangely delineated.
So that vertical white line, um, structural to hold up the building or what?
Uh, I think that vertical white line is just, uh, fill that was not, uh, like part of the elevation that wasn't hatched in. It should just be stone further back. Well, it's a graphical error.
Well, you look, here's the edge of the, um, addition. And it follows down, so this would be, this may have been to. Denote that this wall back here is existing and it's back further, that's part of the original structure. So that the new structure is here and going up here. Now, Nico.
Um, yes.
Are we going to be able to move this addition any closer than we show it here?
I, I believe, no, because I, I believe our concerns were the foundational impacts to those setbacks. Um, we had talked about cantilevering that slab and going through the expense of doing that. Because we still needed accessway and we were restricted between the, uh, the waterway setbacks and the, the wetland setbacks.
My contention is still that if that terrace. Was eliminated, you could move the addition further back.
I understand your point, sir, however, if you move that addition back, you encroach actual foundation. Uh, and can no longer.
So what you're saying is that.
Nico, Nico, that's not.
Let me please ask my question. My contention now is that that. Terrace is now cantilevered over the accessway and is actually closer to the, the red line. Than the survey indicates.
The survey does not show the cantilevered terrace.
Okay, I would have, well, um. I would object to it being the closer and I think it would cause a problem with equipment. Being moved in and out, striking the structure. I don't think that the surveyor has properly shown the fact that there's a cantilever that very well may cross that red line.
I, Nico, how, how far back does the terrace go? What's the dimension of?
The terrace is eight feet.
So there's a possibility that it could approach over what are the, um, the, the, uh. The soil and erosion controls, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that, I mean, uh, Mister Levy, I didn't realize that. And I am, I'm a little, uh, and I, 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 I'm somewhat embarrassed that I didn't. But I want to look at that, I, I, you know, how important is that terrace to this project? Nico.
Let me let me inter- interject here for a second. I think what you have is the need to convince the board. That you've taken all measures to reduce the variance. I don't see it at the moment. Go ahead.
I was gonna say that terrace can be reduced. Um, I think we were trying to keep with the similar architecture and language of the house. With the rear elevation and having uh terraces that break up the monolithic rear elevation. We can examine reducing that terrace. And and reevaluating perhaps.
I think you seriously need to.
I mean, Nico, they're.
It also.
We could, we could. Keep the hearing open. Assuming the board is amenable to this, for us to evaluate the terrace. And see if there's something less that we can do. And come back to you if this is a concern and the board, I've got two people saying they're. They don't think we've made the minimum adjustment necessary, which means if we lose two votes. We lose.
You've lost, yes.
So.
Yeah, I I think let's, we can, we can definitely. Um, circle back, I I I understand and hear your concerns. Um, and we will make adjustments.
All right, so I'd like to, I'd like to take some guidance from you guys.
All right, well, that that's up to me, back off. Would you, board members that are sitting on this, um, allow the hearing to remain open to the next month?
I would.
Raise your hand if you agree to do so.
For what to oh?
To leave it open until next month.
Yes.
Yes.
We'll do so, we will leave it open till next month.
Is there, uh, can I just ask, I'd like to drain, are there any other concerns or questions that you have concerning this project?
I I can, hello, the only thing that I have as a concern is the total mass of the building. And um, I understand what your variance request is, and I think you need to be even more clear next time you bring this. Before the board.
About the total mass?
Let me ask why it's needed. Uh, remember, you need. A really good reason for uh, why the property owner is being denied the use of their property. And in this case, I don't think you really meant that, so let's give it another shot.
The other thing I think should be looked at. Because you've done quite a bit of work on. Uh, you know, re subdividing this property. How buildable the adjacent lot is? I don't think we would grant a variance to build on that lot.
Probably not.
I I think you've created an unbillable, unbuildable, unsalable lot. I have no objection to it, but I think your clients need to go into this knowing. That they've basically created a useless piece of property. At least in my eyes, as a member of the zoning board of appeals.
What if our clients were to merge this lot, the vacant lot into the main lot?
I would feel a whole lot better.
Yeah, so would I.
And how would that impact your view of the deck in the back?
Not at all. I think they're two very different issues.
Yeah, you you think about Bill, you know, think about being out of the harbor itself. And you got a massive, a large building, very attractive, but now you're gonna make it a massive building. And you don't wanna move things around so that you're meeting. The zoning requirements. That might you in the back.
You know, you use.
Happened down the line, trying to get this approved.
Uh, Mister Gleason, you used the word McMansion at the onset of your presentation. I would contend this is a McMansion.
What we're proposing?
What you're, what is being proposed? Is a Rowatton McMansion with the massive volume of it.
Anyway, take your best shot at it next month and come up with a good explanation on why you need the variance. And why your clients are being denied use of their property that they need to have, that they have a. An absolute need to do this addition. I mean, that's how it works, you know that.
Got it, okay.
Right. Alrighty.
All right, so this continued to what date?
I don't know, do we have the date, Tammy?
August seventeenth.
August seventeenth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And um, we can take down the elevation. Grab the screen back.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna. I'll stop my share.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So ladies and gentlemen, um, with that being continued, we have only one to vote on tonight. And. Remember, I with it, we can hear you if your mic is on. First one up was Daniel, Marilyn, Tom, Steve and Ben. And we still have you all here, correct? Just like to make sure, I see it, people nodding, so. What I'm gonna do is just kind of give you general guidance. You need to think about. Uh, the requister. Whether they, you know, how they meet the requirements we have in the Z B A. And um. If you had any suggestions to them that they could remedy and come back, assuming we left theirs open till next month. There were some similarities between the two requests. Different parts of town. Obviously, different sized buildings. Much different. Maximum variance. Uh, so with all that in mind.
I'm I'm, you know what, I don't wanna talk to you guys right now, I wanna see.
Okay, you don't wanna, you don't wanna even interrupt. All right, so with that in mind, you five people who were sitting need to discuss this. And come up with your recommendation, leave it open, um, deny it or grant it.
So the only change is just two feet, correct, to the front setback of the property and the sides stay the same? And um. The second floor, we're at another room that could connect from the first floor to second floor, correct? I'm gonna add.
Expansion of that.
Um, you can listen, but you can't. Okay, thank you, right, so the 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 answer to you is yes, that's how I recall the explanation.
Well, the the. Zoning setback rate is thirty feet and the existing condition is. Twenty, what was it, twenty feet, right, so the current structure is non complying.
But it does comply with the neighbors, uh, you look at the adjacent properties, I think all the porches kind of lined up, am I correct to assume that, Tammy?
Tammy, do you think they're lined up if you go down the street?
Uh, I haven't taken a look at that, I mean, the the um, but the initial question was, are they making it wider? They are making it slightly wider, just so we're clear on that.
But the front setback is kind of lined up with the houses going from uh, not west seat or the opposite way.
I'm I'm looking at the Google Maps right now and that. Their front porch office space. Addition does look. Like it sticks out further than the other houses on the street. Um, in the in the current condition.
Okay.
Uh, thanks, Daniel. Can you tell if the main structure of the building is sticking out past the others or whether it's even with?
The like um, jog on, I guess, with the north side of the house where it jogs back there, that. Roofline looks like it lines up with everything else on the street, so that probably is. Complying.
I was gonna say, I was here today and I think it does line up. I I went down the street just to look how that house kind of blended in. So.
Well, you know, they don't have a real reason to do this other than they'd like to. Um, and that's not how we operate. So they 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 just don't have what I think it takes to have this granted. You wanna give them another shot at it, um, and let them figure out something else, then we leave the hearing open and they can come back next month. If you wanna deny it, you could do that.
I think if the existing setback of the building was maintained, if it was still. Uh, twenty instead of moved up to eighteen, cuz I I didn't see a super strong rationale for why it needed to be one or the other. Um, I think this might be a little bit easier to approve.
I agree, because I mean, that's the point is that we. It shouldn't just be, uh, you know. Feeling of what you want, I, even though it's just two feet, but that's, that's not what these uh, the parameters say. So I would tend to agree that it should just be twenty, not eighteen.
Yeah, also let the builder represented them have another discussion with them, why they needed that upstairs space. Very precise requirement as to what it is they don't have that they absolutely as property do need. And that would help substantiate the variance request. The way we're going right now is, um, gee, we'd like it. And that generally doesn't fly.
You know, Andy, I I like that idea you mentioned about having to go back to the builder and come back. I kind of like that idea, I just don't know how to proceed with that thought.
I just, I'll just ask you guys to vote to leave it open, um, but you know. One of you may feel strongly about one way or the other, that you wanna grant it tonight or you don't wanna grant it tonight. If you're strong in your belief, let me know, and we won't leave it open.
I would vote to leave it open.
Yeah, I I agree, I think there's a. A way this can be worked through.
Just raise your hand if you wanna leave it open till the next meeting and. Um, good, and Steve, yes, all right. It is open, um, and that concludes that item for the seat. So both I made items are included, now let's move on to the rest of. Um, the agenda.
Excuse me, Andy, do we do, we do a first and a second? Or we just keep it open, that means we never made a vote, we just wait for the next meeting, correct, August seventeen?
Next meeting, yeah, and the meeting was set at August seventeenth.
Thank you.
Yeah, if, by the way, let me mention something. If. You're not gonna be there, let Tammy know that, cuz she'll have to roust up somebody to cover for you and give them the minutes from tonight. Right? We need to have the same crew on each of these. So anybody going away, we gotta figure out how to cover.
I will actually be on vacation that day, um. So that, that's good that you mentioned that.
So we would have to then come up for a replacement for you. And that's not too difficult, I mean, I could do it, but. You you get the point, so if anybody else suddenly after they go home tonight with a calendar, get back to us in the morning and tell us what's going on. So with that. Let me get some light on this so I can read what we're doing. Um, did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
But you guys. Speak of any problems you see.
I didn't notice any. My name spelled right.
So what we need when we do minutes now. With this new twist of having the board members that are seated. For the hearing, they have to be listed. At the top of the item. Say this was, these are the board members seated for this item. And then you gotta list the people, thanks. Each time there's an item, now there aren't that many items, it's not that difficult. But it means that the record's gotta be kept. And uh, we haven't been doing that, but we're gonna have to. Okay, Tammy?
Yep, we can do it for sure, if you want, you can, you can vote with um, with these corrections noted.
Uh, do you think we can go back and get who was seated that, you know, we made a point of saying it, might only be on the recording, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I can, I can get it off of the, off of the.
Then let's, let's table the the minutes until next meeting, uh, cuz I would like to have those names in.
Okay, we said tabled, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just me doing my thing, uh, board members. Um, you saw the comment in the agenda. About having to have had the training, um. By January first, twenty twenty four? Everybody's there.
Yep.
All right. Cuz even though state law says. Then once you're appointed to a board or elected to a board. You sit until you decide to get off or you're replaced. Uh, your term expires and replaced. Um, I have a hunch that if this one's a court, if you're not qualified. I think you're gonna be removed from the board. That's just my hunch. Because it doesn't seem to comply with existing state law, but this is a new requirement, and I would think a judge would tend to say, yeah, that makes sense. You gotta be qualified or you can't be there.
And Andy, I would agree with you, given a couple of. Very sharp attorneys we've had grilling us in the past on some items. That we need to be very clear and precise about this.
Absolutely, and and you know, Tammy has an even uh, more stringent requirement than we have. Um, I imagine Tammy's been a meter of requirement, right?
Of course.
Of course. With that, is there anything else that anybody has that we need to deal with?
Now, now, is that, is that a four hour course, it seems like every other year, is that, or or twice a year, I always get that by annual stuff wrong.
Uh, every every two years.
Every two years, four hours, okay.
Yeah, and you know, it certainly wasn't four hours the last time.
No, seven hours.
Yeah. It was like seven hours.
A lot.
Something like that. Um, so maybe, maybe we can convince whoever's putting this on to shorten it up a bit, I know, I would appreciate that.
If they have a refresher version.
Yeah, I hope.
I mean, there was a lot of stuff that wasn't necessarily applicable to the.
Yeah. Lunchtime comedy hour.
I don't know who was that, actually, but there was essence in that power, but yeah, there's a little standup comedy there.
So Tammy, are you gonna send us invites or do we give you dates or how are we gonna? Put the dates together?
We will be good, with the exception, what, one member, Tammy, we're good through.
Um.
Twenty four.
Correct, through the twenty fourth, everybody is fine, I I do need those. Some of you have already given me your certificates, I'm still waiting.
Send it in.
You have mine, am I my good, just making.
Yes, I have yours.
And me too, I.
Yes.
Do me, do me a favor, Tammy, how, show or send me the list of those who have not yet provided it. And also send an email to them, so that they know what I know.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else that somebody might wanna bring up as an issue?
No.
Not hearing anything, uh.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the hearing, the meeting.
Yeah, uh, and. Lee for not having the first item, uh, so I second that and all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, everyone.
Have a good one.
Good night.
All right.
Till next month.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
So Michael, you understand you're gonna come back in August, right?
Yes, yes, that's fine, so we will just, the question is, uh, so we will just push back. The house to original conditions, which is the twenty point five.